Of the block that we're discussing, so I'm going to share my screen if that's okay. All right. Oh, host is disabled. I don't think I can do it. Uh, I certainly don't have to, but if you'd like to enable my sharing capabilities, I can do that.
Kayla, if you can permit Ms. Brinkie to share the screen, that would be great.
I think I just did. It should be available now.
Okay, so Ms. Brinkie, if you would, it may have already been identified or provided in your submissions. Uh, and if it has, uh, just identify it as sheet whatever of X. Um, and if it has not, please, uh, email it tomorrow to, uh, to me and I'll send it to the board or to the Kayla and we'll send it to the board secretary. Okay?
Okay, very good. Uh, I will take a screenshot of my screen because what I'm going to show you is an aerial on Google Maps. So it's something that we can all access, but hopefully this will make it easier for us to look at it together. Um, so Ms. South, if I can, I, I believe you can see my cursor on the screen. Can you see my cursor?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so what is the lot that I have my cursor on right here as we're proposing it?
Lot A.
Okay, and is this dwelling over here, Lot B?
It is, yes.
And what is this structure right here?
That is a garage.
And is this the driveway to the garage?
It is, yes.
Okay, and back here, is this Lot 28?
It is, yes.
And there's no dwelling on Lot 28 right now, right?
Correct, there is no dwelling.
And the fifteen feet that we are proposing to take from Lot 28 does not impact the size of Lot 28 and its, um, conformance with the seventy-two-hundred-foot requirement, does it?
No, it does not impact that.
Okay, great. Um. All right, I'm going to take my screen down so that we can all see each other again, but if any board member wants to reference this in the future, I can bring it back up very easily.
So counsel, was that, uh, included in your submissions?
I'm sorry, it was not.
Okay.
I forgot.
Uh, the screenshot referenced and identified as, as, as the Google aerial map will be referred to as Exhibit A1, and counsel, if you'll just email it to me, you know, do a screenshot or whatever tomorrow and just email it to us, um, that would be great.
I will do that. Thank you. Uh, Ms. South, can you tell us how many bedrooms the dwelling on Lot A currently has?
So it currently has two bedrooms. Um, we did add two egress windows to the basement. Um, but we're in the, um, preliminary stages of determining what we need to do to make it an official third bedroom.
And how many parking spaces does Lot A offer?
Um, it has two, um, paved concrete driveway, or it has one driveway space and one, um, garage space.
In Lot B, how many bedrooms does the dwelling on Lot B have?
It has two.
And how many parking spaces does it have?
It has two.
Great. And, uh, lastly, our planner, Ms. Barber, is going to go through all of the recommendations from the planner and engineer. But can you confirm that you are willing to add a sidewalk and a curb cut as recommended by the Townships engineer?
I can confirm that I am willing to do that, yes.
Okay, great. Um, and I just wanted to mention, if it's not obvious already, the engineer's letter did include, uh, a recommendation to have an easement for that garage that's encroaching on Lot 28. But with the fifteen feet that's being taken from Lot 28, that easement is no longer necessary. Uh, so that is something that I should have said before Ms. South started her testimony, but I did not want to forget because it's important to address. Uh, and now I am ready to qualify Ms. Barber as our planner.
Just real quick, um, for just identification purposes, the, uh, both the properties, both the dwellings are not going to be deed restricted, affordable, their market rate, um, rental units, correct? The South?
Yes, that is correct, sorry.
Okay, um, and so, uh, counsel, you're ready for, I guess it's Ms. Barber to testify?
I am.
Ms. Barber, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
Go ahead, counsel.
All right, uh, Ms. Barber, I'd just like to go through some of your, uh, qualifications for a few minutes. Where did you get your education?
Uh, Rutgers University.
And what was your area of study?
Um, I got a bachelor of science, science in, uh, landscape architecture.
And how many years of experience do you have as a planner?
Uh, six years.
And how many years of experience do you have in, uh, landscape architecture or related to architecture?
Twenty-one.
Uh, have you testified in front of other boards in New Jersey?
Uh, yes, I have as a planner.
Do you recall any of those towns?
Sure, Cherry Hill, uh, Medford, Woolwich, and West Hampton.
And your area of expertise as a planner includes which?
Um, land planning, um, master plan, uh, reexams, redevelopment plans, and also, um, municipal reviews of applications.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gardi, at this time, I'd like to qualify Ms. Barber as our expert and professional planner.
Sure, her, your license is, is obviously active, Ms. Barber, correct?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I, I guess if it's good enough for Cherry Hill and for some other towns in our state, um, I'd recommend we accept Ms. Barber.
Thank you.
All right, so I will turn it over to Ms. Barber. She, uh, speaks all of the language and terminologies that I would mess up if I tried, so I rely on her expertise right now.
Great. Uh, I'm also going to share my screen with the, uh, plan that you have not received, that, uh, just making it clear with the, the new, um, proposed lot lines now onto Lot 28, if that's okay with you.
Please.
Sorry about this. I just want to zoom in. I thought I could do it. There we go. Okay, so the applicant's requesting a C1 bulk variance, um, MLULs forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy for both proposed, um, actually proposed lot, uh, A and B by reason of this extraordinary and exceptional situation which uniquely affects Lot 10, Lots 31 through 33. Uh, we will show that granting of the relief will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of Malholy's, um, zoning plan. So I would like to first discuss the existing nonconforming, um, conditions that are present on Lot A that this subdivision is not creating. To begin with, um, the zone requires thirty-five-foot building setback for the lot frontage along the front. Um, on the, oops, sorry about that. Uh-oh. Did my screen just disappear?
It's still here.
Oh, did it? Okay, sorry, disappeared on my end. Okay, sorry about that. Um. Along Harrison Avenue, there's a thirteen-point-one existing nonconforming front yard setback where thirty-five feet is required. And along South Avenue, again, we have, um, an existing nonconforming setback of twenty-three point eight feet. Um, for this lot, um, we also have an existing nonconforming of minus three-point-one feet encroaches onto the other lot as it is now. Going forward, um, with the subdivision that we're now proposing, which is the red lines, uh, we will still need a variance for the rear yard setback, twenty-three point eight feet on this lot. Um, but everything else now will conform. We will have our, uh, side yard setback of eight feet and also, um, the lot will now, as, um, as already been discussed, will now conform to the minimum lot size. Moving on to Lot B, um, again, the existing nonconforming, um, setbacks on this lot are again along South Avenue, uh, where thirty-five feet is required. We only have, uh, twenty-three point one existing nonconforming condition. Um, and as, as of right now, uh, the rear yard also setback is nonconforming at fourteen point one instead of thirty-five feet. Um, with the subdivision, we will still have, uh, the variance, uh, requirement in the rear yard of this property. We still will not reach the thirty-five feet. Um, and I believe those are all the bulk variances. Oh, I'm sorry, on Lot B, we also still, uh, we are requesting a variance for the lot frontage where sixty feet is required. We only have thirty-nine point five feet. And also the lot size, uh, we will still need a variance, uh, of seventy-two hundred square feet. We are only providing three thousand nine hundred and forty-seven square feet. If I run through these things very quickly, um. And those are the bulk variances that we are requesting. Um, we feel that the positive criteria, um, the proposed minor subdivision creation of lots A and B, um, will provide smaller, more affordable housing for renters and future ownership and thereby fulfills the MLUL's purpose forty colon fifty-five D dash two G to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of residential uses to meet the needs of our New Jersey citizens. And we feel that there is no negative criteria as the minor subdivision is not proposing any new structures. Uh, and per the ordinance section one forty-nine dash forty-seven, under your general regulations, regulations in the zoning chapter, no lot may contain more than one principal building. This minor subdivision will correct, uh, that situation and will provide future tenants and owners with a clear delineation of their property. Um, as was also mentioned, we can go through the, the letters. Uh, the engineer had concern about the, um, the off-street parking for proposed Lot B. Um, we will need to ask for the design waivers for section one forty-nine dash eighty-three F in regard to the off-street parking for Lot B for over here. Uh, for the county's letter, we will provide the first twenty feet off of South Avenue with concrete. Uh, but we are asking for a waiver for the rest of the drive to remain stone. And we will also need, um, design waivers for one forty-nine dash eighty-three F for the six-foot, uh, lawn buffer along both the driveways on both properties. And also a design waiver under the same section for the off, uh, off-street parking space, as you can see right over here. Sorry. There's a, a little pinch here of eight point five feet. Uh, once you get beyond that, it does open up to up to twelve feet wide, uh, but its first parking spaces, we will ask for the waiver because there is a, an area where the second space starts that is at eight and a half feet. And we do not believe that with the additional, um, square footage added to the lots that we will need any waivers for the, uh, thirty percent of impervious coverage going over that.
Is that everything, Phil?
That is everything.
Questions from, uh, the planner, Ms. Fegley?
Uh, did Ms. Barber want to go through our letter or, um, I guess maybe you already have, let me see. I'm just marking everything that you've already addressed.
Sure.
And I think, um, I think you have addressed it because you, um, went through all the, the variances. You said you were going to do the sidewalk.
Yes.
The, the, actually, the, the parking spaces, don't you need a de minimis, um, exception for the parking on, also on Lot A because you said there were, uh, there's going to be three bedrooms and you need, well, if it wasn't specified, um, you need two point five spaces and you only have two.
Well, not with the new, um, expansion. We have two in the driveway and one in the garage.
Okay, but that, so with the expand, with the additional fifteen feet, that gives you
Correct.
more parking because you have, uh, the concrete for that. Okay, that, I don't know if that was, um, clear, but I got it. Um. And then I think the only other thing that, um, that the engineer had this to coordinating the lot numbers with the tax assessor.
I believe, I believe we do have that and I believe, uh, Lot A is going, we revert back to Lot 31 and Lot B is Lot 32. Am I correct? On that? Ms. South or Ms. Brink?
I say I'm not sure who you're asking. I don't know.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes, I believe you are correct.
I believe. I believe we provided that letter. I'm not sure. Maybe it was after the application was, was submitted, but we do have a letter from the tax assessor.
Okay, um, and I just wanted to point out to the board that Ms. Barber did call me this afternoon and, and discussed, uh, the fact that they were going to add the fifteen additional feet, which is a good idea. It just takes all those encroachments away, um, makes the one lot bigger and they aren't really, they're, they're not proposing anything new. And by ordinance, you're really not allowed to have two primary uses or principal uses on one lot, so this just makes it better for the, the residents that are going to be living there and, and in the future if there's a sale, just so that they know where their property is and where the other property is. It just makes sense. That's all I have. Thank you.
Comments or questions from the engineer?
I think he's on mute. If he's the seventh through two. Would you like us to take the plan off the screens so we can see each other again? Here is.
I can see.
Okay.
I believe, I believe the engineer is muted.
Well, he just came off mute. It's like.
Okay, we got you.
Okay, okay. Um, yes, the, uh, the extra fifteen feet was like number six in our, in our review letter, so that's a very good thing and it, uh, it makes a lot of, makes it very compliant with the, with the whole plan. The one comment I have is, is that you mentioned the, for Lot B, the rear setback would be fourteen feet. I believe with the extra fifteen feet, it'll be twenty-nine feet.
Correct, I mentioned that. We would still need a variance because, uh, the minimum is, uh, setback is thirty-five feet. So correct, we would still need a.
You still need a variance, but the variance is for twenty-nine feet, right? Uh, other than that, uh, pretty well covered everything, so I think that we are, we are good to go from, from, from our perspective.
Thank you. All right, questions or comments from, uh, members of the board? Mr. Jones?
I have none.
Mr. Brown?
None.
Mr. Codyani?
Not this time.
Ms. Lopez?
None.
No questions at this time.
Ms. Saucier?
None.
Uh, Mr. Stafford?
None.
Uh, I want to open this to members of the public. Are there any members of the public present that wish to make a comment or ask a question? Ms. Hatch?
Nope.
Or Mr. Hatch, I'm sorry.
It's Lewis. No, no question. No question.
Okay, Madam Solicitor, can you summarize the bulk variances? Uh, and that we would need in order to make a motion?
Sure, I'll do my best. Um, the, uh, one thing I just want to make sure that we have, so I, I know you've got the letter from the tax assessor. The applicant agrees to coordinate the lot numbers reconfiguration and everything with the tax assessor, correct?
Correct.
And, um, the engineer's comment letter says that the parcel fronts County Route six eighty-three, so county approval, to the extent that it's, uh, not obtained yet, will be required, correct?
Correct, we did receive a conditional approval.
Good, okay, good. Um, to the extent that ADA accessibility is required, um, you comply with that.
Correct.
Um, and understanding that, um, to the extent that it may affect the tax rates and any, it might trigger a, a minor affordable housing trust fund contribution. Uh, I don't know how that would be done, but to the extent that any such, um, ordinance or statute applies, the, uh, applicant would have to comply with existing law, understood?
Yes.
Um, and then the subdivision, is that going to be accomplished by deed?
Yes.
Okay, and, and so you'll submit the deed to the board's engineer and to me for, uh, review and as to the form and as to the, uh, content, in particular to the engineer, because he'll review all the, uh, site dimensions and with these new revisions, that removes a lot of the issues, but you'll, you'll submit it to the board engineer for his review, okay?
Yeah, yes.
Very good. Um, and then the, uh, the page that, um, page that, um, Ms. Barber was referring to, uh, in my notes, I referred that, I, I listed that as Exhibit A2. It was the subdivision plan. Um, just do us a favor and email us a copy of that particular sheet tomorrow so that we have that to refer to and the board secretary has that for her records, okay?
Yes, I will.
All right, so, and, and feel free to jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Ms. Fegley and, and counsel. Uh, and I guess also, um, just in, just the professionals on this, the applicant is proposing to, uh, subdivide and, and correct some lot lines on two properties, two lots or one lot that currently has two residents on it, two principal dwellings. And so as, as the board's planner noted and the board's engineer has noted, having the subdivision will correct a nonconforming condition in that there are two present principal residents on the same lot and will add for clarity in terms of ownership and lot lines and provide, um, reduce some existing nonconformities. The applicant has agreed to add fifteen feet, I guess, on to each of lots A and B from, uh, Lot 28, which is owned by the applicant corporation as well, and that's in Block 110 or same block?
110.
And so, a- as I understand it, the Lot A is now going to be six, six, six thousand three hundred and thirty-three square feet. Is that correct, Ms. Brinkie?
No, uh, seven thousand three hundred and thirty-three.
And then Lot B will be thirty-nine forty-seven?
Yes.
Square feet, correct?
Correct.
All right, and so that the Lot A, as far as, uh, the lot size is conforming, but they need a variance as to Lot B, um, to permit it to be thirty-nine forty-seven where seventy-two-hundred square feet is required. Um, in addition, they'll need a, a, a variance as to, um, the lot frontage for Lot B, um. Do you also need one for Lot A? Is, is Lot A being changed from thirty-nine point five on square feet where fifty, sixty feet is, is required?
Ms. Barber has those numbers.
Okay.
No, Lot, Lot A conforms on both frontages. I did skip that in mine.
Yeah, okay, so now the only, um, the only, yeah.
Lot frontage is Lot B.
That's right, okay, so Lot, Lot A, just in case, has, has reduced the nonconformity, so they need the, the variance for the rear yard setback, which would be twenty-three point eight feet where thirty-five feet is required and they will now conform with the side yard setbacks in the lot size. As to Lot B, they still need, um, variances as to the lot size, as I mentioned, uh, the rear yard setback, um, the front yard setback to allow twenty-three point one feet where thirty-five feet is is required. Um, they're not proposing to add any new structures. They're reducing the existing nonconformities and will correct this strange issue of having two principal uses on the same lot. They've requested a design waiver, de minimis design waiver with respect to, um, the parking for Lot B, um, noting that the extension of the concrete on the driveway will allow them to achieve a certain amount of parking for Lot A. Um, and they've asked for the remainder, uh, design waiver with respect to Lot A to permit the rest of the area that's not paved to remain as stone, which, um, furthers the fact of, of not adding impervious coverage. Um, they've asked for the design waiver for off-street parking for Lot B, um. They've agreed to add the sidewalk, the extension of the sidewalk as was testified by Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, Ms. South, and with the twenty-eight feet added, can we confirm that we'll not need de easement? Um, and then they're also going to submit, um, they've agreed to certain regular conditions, including payment of all taxes, all permitting fees, any inspections which would be required would be required under the ordinance, um, pay all professional escrows. Um, the board has heard testimony of our professionals indicating, uh, that they basically agree with the applicant's professional that, uh, the proposed subdivision eliminates a, uh, planning oddity, um, that it reduces existing, uh, nonconformities and it makes more sense from a planning perspective. Um, based upon all the testimony, the recitation of the design waivers and the setback or in the variance relief requested, is there a motion by the board to, um, to grant the application for the subdivision with the design waivers and variance relief requested based upon all the conditions and the testimony presented?
Do we have a motion?
So moved, Josh.
Second.
Second.
Jim. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Teddy Kevich?
Yes.
Jason Jones?
Yes.
Josh Brown?
Yes.
Jim Codyani?
Yes.
Kerry Lopez?
Yes.
Nicole Saucier?
Yes.
Stefan Stafford?
Yes.
Lou Garty?
I'm the solicitor, I, I don't vote.
Pardon.
Uh, your motion carries, good luck, Ms. South. Uh, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much, we will get over our submissions, uh, tomorrow, and then have the deeds ready for review.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Brackey. Okay, we will, uh, start the hearing. Repealing and replacing the Articles one, two, and three of Chapter one forty-three. Uh, housing low and moderate income of the code of the township in Mount Holly , uh, provides affordable housing ordinance. And we have had referred to us three ordinances from town council. Uh, Ms. Fegley, I believe you have a, uh, presentation?
Certain ordinances are part of the amended Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that we did in twenty-nineteen. So, I think it's probably better to do the kind of an, a, a quick summary of the amended twenty-twenty-two, um, Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, and that'll describe why we, we're doing these three ordinances, because at, at the end, you have to determine that it's cons, that the ordinances are consistent with the master plan, particularly the, um, housing element, so it just makes, I think it'll flow better to, to go through the, the, uh, housing element. Um, everyone got a copy of that, the housing element really hasn't changed, that's the first part of this luminous document, but what has changed is the fair share plan. And the reason we're going through this again in twenty-twenty-two, when we just went through it in twenty-nineteen, is because Virtua decided to stay in Mount Holly. And for those that were on the board, remember, um, there was no additional obligation, but the township agreed to adopt an overlay zone for that OB district around, um, Virtua, so that if and when any, the properties were sold, or they became available for housing, there would be a fair share, um, obligation, for, for instance, if you had, uh, subdivision that created five or more lots, there would be an obligation. So, because Virtua is now back in Mount Holly, and wants to use those parcels, um, the ones that they own anyway, that ordinance has to be rescinded, and we had to go and find with fair share housing and the, uh, special court master, we had to find other sites that were available. And the, the township, you know, was trying to find sites and propose some, but in the end, it was fair share housing and the court master that went on a tour of Mount Holly, and they picked these four sites, and they're referred to as Site A, B, C, and D. So, if, if anyone wonders, you know, how did they get picked, basically, um, fair share housing and the court master selected them. So, going into the document, starts on page twenty-five, and the introduction is pretty much the same. Um, I did email everyone some changes. And if I seem a little disorganized, I'm not, except I had these changes to quick make and get to everyone, and then there were also ordinance changes that just, um, got to me at the end of the day, so I had to, you know, kind of scramble to put them together, so anyway, um, if you see in the, if you checked your email, anything that you, you got for the fair share plan, that's in bold green, that's a revision, but there was nothing really substantial. Uh, for instance, it might have said my report, and it should have been the report, or the court master's report. Um, there were some changes as far as the percentages, uh, and that was language that after the court master just reviewed the document, um, I guess over the weekend or this morning, got to me, so, uh, there's nothing substantive, but the resolution will, uh, state that this was the May fifth, twenty-twenty-two Housing Element and Fair Share Plan revised, uh, what did I say, did I say February, did I say May? May, May fifth, revised May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, and if approved tonight, the changes, I'll make these changes, and then that'll be the, um, the document. So, there were some things that on page twenty-eight needed to be, uh, taken out, all these are, there was the bold green, and then there was the red strike-through, deleting it, and some of the, the things, um, just on page twenty-eight, that the, the strike-through was a little bit confusing to the court master, so I just deleted it because it wasn't even necessary. But, um, so the board got all those changes, the one that, and after these changes went out, I got a couple more from the court master, um, and those were basically, if you go to, and I wanna specifically say this because it's important, um, on page thirty-nine, controls on affordability, it should read that second, uh, third, fourth sentence, the ten per, except that in lieu of ten percent affordable units in rental projects, would be required to be very low units, at, and that should be thirty-five percent, or less of the median income. Thirteen percent of affordable units in such projects will require, be required to be very low income at thirty percent, or less of the median income. And that's all just standard language that's in the settlement agreement, um, and it's just typical from the, um, UHAP Uniform of Affordable Housing Controls. Um, so let's go to the four sites, Site A, there's a map on page, page after thirty-seven. Uh, that's down around Haynes, at the border of Haynesport Township, it's four point nine three acres in size. Um, it could provide, the site's currently in the I, limited industrial zone, and the tax map is, uh, follows that to see exactly where it is, and that site, if it were, were totally available, and not just por, partially, because there are, um, five different properties in there, it could provide ninety-seven units. And when I say all these, it's not required that, you know, anybody, um, purchase these properties and construct the, the affordable housing, this would just be if these properties become available, this would be an overlay zoning, so the industrial zoning go away, and it, this affordable housing, the AH zone, would come into play for those properties. Then, uh, Site B, that has a number of, um, properties, starting on page forty-two in the table. Um, surrounded by, I wish I had more light in here. White Street, I think, uh, Monroe Church. Um, and part, part of this is, the longtime board members know, uh, have come into the planning board a number of times for that, uh, industrial site in the center there. Uh, but the site is located in the MVR Mulray's Village District, and where's the number of units? Site's four point six-two acres in size, and even this density, um, the fair share housing and the court master gave us the, told us that it has to be at twenty units per acre. With the density. Um, so moving on to Site C, those properties are located on page forty-seven. Uh, the site's in the, it's split between the B-two and the R-two zoning districts. It's on South Street and, uh, Pine Street runs through there, and South Pemberton Road. And there was, there is some contamination on, uh, Site C, so we just gave the updated status. There's nothing really that, um, would prohibit residential development, there might need to be engineering controls, vapor intrusion barriers, that kind of thing. Uh, so, that site would produce a hundred and twenty-nine units, because it's six point four-six acres. Going to Site D, that one, there's two properties, it's, um, up in the, next to the border of East Hampton Township, uh, on Burden Street. It's in the R-one residential district. Four point three-seven acres, at a density of twenty units per acre, that could have eighty-seven units. And if you're looking at the, the new page fifty-three, um, that whole thing density was deleted because it was a duplication of what was above it, basically. And then, the rest of the report is basically, um, a lot like the twenty-nineteen was. Uh, affordable housing administration and affirmative marketing, that was revised just because the, the old section in the twenty-nineteen, uh, report was talking about the, before the twenty-nineteen ordinance was approved, there was a, o, other section, one forty-three, really just updates that. And affordable housing trust fund, that's all the same, we didn't have to do a new, uh, spending plan, and monitoring, on page fifty-eight, just was updated to, uh, starting on December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and that, that coincides with the date of the, uh, twenty twenty, twenty-one settlement agreement, the date that it was signed. And, that's about it, the, the new settlement agreement, yeah, December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, that's in, uh, Appendix A, along with the other one, the one from twenty-nineteen. The court master's February second, twenty-twenty-two report, with the conditions. And then we go to the ordinances that are required, so, uh, in the fair share housing agreement, fair share housing center agreement, there were certain, um, items, a, a lot of them, that we, that this report had to address, and the court master's, uh, report, there, I think there were six items that we had to address. So, the, the first one, one of many, um, was this mandatory affordable housing set-aside ordinance, and, wait, that's not, I'm out of order here, let's do, let's do them in order. Uh, twenty-twenty-two dash six, that was creating the AH inclusionary overlay residential district, and the AH affordable housing, obviously, and that, um, sets the standards for the ordinance in order to provide affordable housing if and when, um, any portion or the entirety of any of these lots become available, there's special rules, there's special density, um, accessory buildings. And so this ordinance is consistent with the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, because it was, um, both were written to be parallel, in the same. Uh, twenty-twenty-two dash seven, that's the land use zoning to create a mandatory affordable, affordable housing set-aside ordinance. And this is in addition to the four overlay zones, or the four affordable housing, uh, overlay zones, and what this requires is mandatory set-aside, uh, as I was mentioning before, if you have, um, on page three of, three of seven, talks about the set-aside. Any project, uh, or mixed-use project, which consists, consists of five or more new residential dwellings at six units, uh, per acre or higher, there's certain things that, you know, have to be done, you have to have a twenty percent set-aside for affordable units, um, for owners, and then fifteen percent for the rentals. Number of other things in there, at least twenty-five percent of the units, she'll be through rental, you know, fifty percent of the affordable units, um, have to have a certain bedroom type, you know, and then it gets into the moderate, the low, very low, all this, um, all these uh, regulations that have to be met are spelled out in here, and this ordinance would likewise be consistent with the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, for again, the reason that they were written, um, you know, in parallel with, with each other. And then the third ordinance is the one, um, entitled land use zoning to create the OB inclusionary overlay district, but what this really is, is it's rescinding the OB district ordinance that we did back in twenty-nineteen, so that all those restrictions, uh, on the Virtua properties, for Virtua and Vicinity, those would go away with the, uh, rescinding of that ordinance by this ordinance, so this likewise is consistent with the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
So Barber, if I can jump in, um, just for the board's, uh, education for members of the public, and anybody, uh, who's reviewed the transcript. This sole modification, the, as it stands now, the township has, is in full compliance with round three of its affordable housing obligation, right? I think you stood for it.
Well, this was, yeah, this was, um, we had a fairness hearing, and the judge and the court master said that this would, adopting all this, we had ninety days to do it from, you know, the hearing date, this would make this in compliance, we could get the, the judgment of opposed.
Right, a- and largely, the reason why we're changing from twenty-nineteen to, to now is because of the change, if you will, of the status of the, uh, the Virtua property, because at first Virtua thought that it was going to, there's, there's a, a change in their status, so based upon that revision, there, there is a change based upon what the special master had recommended, and all of these changes were the result of extensive negotiation, extensive planning and review. A- and this is to assist the township in meeting, uh, you know, to the extent needed for new, uh, residential complexes built, and providing, uh, affordable housing to, to, to fulfill its obligation in, in basically the next round. So, and, and you've testified that this is all consistent with the township's master plan, it makes good planning sense, and you recommend that this board, uh, adopt, uh, or recommend the adoption, report back the recommendation that you, the board adopt, whether the town council adopt the ordinances, because this board has to comment on them. But then, that the fair share, I'm sorry, the housing element of the fair share plan, of the master plan be adopted, as it's been amended pursuant to all this procedure that you've outlined, is that fair to say?
Yes, and specifically the, um, you know, the, the ordinances are consistent with the Housing Element, uh, plan portion of the master plan, which is what these all deal with. So, yes, we pretty much had no choice, because, um, with Virtua coming, saying they're coming back to Mount Holly, and they're not interested in- and they're not interested in the West Hampton site anymore, um, they wouldn't have been able to build anything. And it would have totally invalidated what we did in twenty nineteen. So we had to come up with a new plan, an amended plan.
Okay, so the board's obligation on this, for the board's reference, is to report back to the township council, uh, your reports and recommendations. Um, and if there's any, I guess Barbara asked if there's any questions, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Okay, I'm gonna go. The only way to do this on Zoom is go, go by the list. Uh, Mr. Jones?
I have no questions.
Mr. Brown?
None, thank you.
Mr. Codiani?
No questions.
Ms. Lopez?
No questions.
Ms. Saucier?
No questions.
Mr. Stafford?
No questions.
Yeah, I'm gonna open this up to, uh, members of the public, or anyone from the public that has a comment or a question.
Not this time. Not this time.
Okay, no comment or question from members of the public. Um, we have, uh, pursuant to this presentation by Ms. Fegley, a resolution, number twenty twenty-two dash twelve. A resolution of this planning board to the Township of Mount Holly, referring to three ordinances, number twenty twenty-two dash six, twenty twenty-two dash seven, and twenty twenty-two dash eight to the Ca- Township Council of Mount Holly, as being consistent with the master plan of the Township of Mount Holly. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
W- with, with the support and adoption of the Housing Element of the fair sh- fair share plan as well. That's in the resolution as well.
Okay.
Solomon?
Second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Ted Yevkovich?
Yes.
Jason Jones?
Yes.
Josh Brown?
Yes.
Jim Codiani?
Yes.
Kerry Lopez?
Yes.
Nicole Saucier?
Yes.
Stefan Stafford?
Yes.
The motion is approved. Uh, thank you, Ms. Fegley, for a, a thorough presentation of the, of the update to this document. We've seen this, this must be the third or fourth time we've seen it. But thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any matters to be presented by members of the public?
Yep.
Matters to be presented by the planner?
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Identify yourself.
My name is Louis Lopez. I'm from Mount Holly. Everybody know me. I've got two question. First question is, uh, if I buy a small.
Mr. Hatch?
Yeah, my name is Louis Lopez. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, my name is Louis Lopez, uh.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, sounds like I'm using my friend's computer. I have two question. First question is, uh, has it, has it been any changing for the solar panel in ground? Has it been any changes?
Wait a minute, can you say that again, please?
Has it been any change in plan to install solar panel in the ground for the planning board?
Nothing. I'm still not understanding what, you, you're talking, solar panels?
Yeah, has it been any changes? It can be easily installed, or we have to go to the planning board?
I think that's a question for the, for the construction official.
Okay. I, um, I got one more quest. Okay, that's it. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for members of the public? Matters to be presented by the planner?
Thank you.
Thank you. Matters to be presented by the engineer?
I don't think he's on anymore.
Yeah, well, I think he's out or he's muted his screen. Matters to be presented by the solicitor?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay, matters to be presented by members of the board. Uh, want to thank Kayla for filling in as the board secretary.
You're welcome.
I hope Jewel's doing well. Do we have a motion to adjourn?